Clerk Paul, can we call the council meeting in order, please?
Lennon.
Here.
Boywood.
Here.
Lisa.
Here.
Faith.
Here.
Pabon.
Here.
Ruiz.
Here.
Aronella.
Here.
Carmichael.
Here.
Eight present mayor.
Can we all rise for the pledge of allegiance and please remain standing?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, without individual liberty, justice for all.
If we could please keep with our thoughts and prayers all the men and women we have on the street tonight. Thank you. If anybody wishes to address the open forum, please step forward to the mic, state your name and address.
Hi, everyone, I'm Yudia Padilla, and I am a current sophomore here at Moreton West High School, and I am the current chapter president of Moreton West Junior State of America. I wanted to inform everyone of our upcoming Juneteenth event. We are currently making plans to commemorate this special day on June 17th at Serenity Park. We hope you can all attend this special day and show your support. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Asia Ravello, the vice president from Moreton West JSA, and we wanted to give a quick shout out to all of our members for being so incredibly dedicated to politics and activism, given that we recently won chapter of the year. Thank you to cabinet that also attended today.
My name is Jose Ramirez, I'm a second ward resident, and I'm here on behalf of Bungalow Plus. June is right around the corner, and so we will be celebrating Pride here in Berwyn. And there's two events that I just want to make sure everybody's aware of. One is June 9th, that's a Friday. We'll be having a panel discussion to discuss Pride, past, present, and securing our future. Our panelists will include former U.S. Representative and parent of a transgender child, Marie Newman, author of Gay and Lesbian History, Jerome Pollan, activist Reyna Ortiz, Unity Illinois Director of Civic Engagement, Jose Wilson, and Berwyn's longest-serving gay politician, City Clerk, Marge Paul. The panel discussion will be from six, five to six, and open forums from six to seven, and it'll be held at the Berwyn Historical Society, 1401 Grove here in Berwyn. And then that Saturday, June 10th, join us for our fourth annual Pride Ride, as we strut our stuff through the Berwyn neighborhoods. There'll be prizes for the most decorated, best decorated car, and most festive dressed person. Lineup starts at 10:30 at 37th and Scoville. Then join us immediately after for a family, fun-filled family picnic at Sunshine Park, 681529 Place here in Berwyn. More information, visit Facebook page, Bungalow Plus, or email bungalow.plus@gmail.com. Thank you. Jose, would you send all that information to our communications department so we can put it out on the website? Sure, absolutely. Thank you. All right, thank you. Do we have somebody else which to speak in open forum?
Good evening, everyone, mayor, clerk. My name is Janelle Morland, I am the founder and president of Pink Divas and Gents Breast Cancer Organization, and we would like to invite you all and inform you all about an upcoming breast cancer 5K walk run that we have that will be taking place at Moreton West High School on Saturday, June 24th. I met Mayor Lovero at 16th District Women's, Women Empowers Met Brunch, and had the opportunity to present it to him and just to tell him a little bit about us, and in hopes of partnership, partnership with Berwyn community, and reaching out to some of your residents, businesses, to see how it is that we can be of help, of service to anyone that's currently faced with or has been detected, or even surviving breast cancer, caregivers and family members. So, saying that, we do have some bags that we would like to share with you all. If I may?
Yes.
What time on Saturday?
So, the walk starts promptly at 9:30, check-in starts at 8:30. I did put some information also in there, and then we also have some information for men, because men take care of breast cancer as well. So, we just want to make sure it's Wednesday, so.
Just hold on to my, I get it from you. Yeah, Marc Scott's got one for me.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much.
And I've had the pleasure. I've had the, yeah, that's on our community calendar. I've also had the pleasure of meeting most of those ladies that are telling American Club, that's when we kind of formed about some idea of doing a walk in Berwyn, so thanks for coming out and sharing it with us. Thank you. Anybody else for open forum? Hearing none, Alderman, anything for open forum?
I have, I just wanted to make a comment regarding the recent diversity, equity, and inclusion. We had the opportunity to participate in yesterday as part of the city's ongoing DEI professional development course. I thought the training was eye-opening and thought-provoking. It was great to have done this with a diverse group of the city staff, and I wanted to thank them for making this such an important learning experience for me and for everyone who was there. Thank you.
So, I wanted to just provide a brief update regarding the diversity, equity, and inclusion as well. The training we attended just yesterday and Monday, it's council members along with many essential staff members from the city. I was glad to hear from both city council colleagues and city employees what an impactful experience this was, and this has been for those that have had the opportunity to attend. I also want to thank our employee assistance program providers, perspectives, the trainers who are awesome, Tatiana and Emilia, for their exceptional delivery of a training program that goes beyond just checking off the box. I look forward to having all employees take part of this training in the coming weeks and embracing a culture of support, education, and diversity among our employees. Thank you to who have all of you guys who've attended so far.
Okay, anybody else?
Yeah, I'd like to jump in. I'd just like to take this opportunity to remind folks that Voting Day for participatory budgeting in the fifth ward is happening on Tuesday, May 16th at 6:00 PM at Het Park Studio, that's 19th and Highland. This is a culmination of hours of research, countless one-on-ones with folks who have done participatory budgeting, and several community meetings over a span of a year. I just want to thank all the fifth ward residents who showed up to the meetings and shared their vision for the ward. I want to thank our volunteers who are taking the time to door knock, reach out to their neighbors, design flyers, and make their voices heard. This was truly a collective effort. There was also a lot of institutional support for this in the community, so I'd like to thank our good partner Ebenezer Church, the state representative of Abdnasr Rashid's office as well for serving as early voting sites. Our local school districts also shared the participatory budgeting information, and North Berwyn Park District for allowing us to hold the space for residents to vote as well. I'd also like to thank the city of Berwyn for sharing the information on Voting Day. This will definitely help get the word out to more fifth ward residents. We could not have done all of this without your collaborative spirits and openness to innovative practices. Participatory budgeting, just for folks in case they don't know, is one of the most democratic ways an elected official or institution can engage its constituents or stakeholders. It has nothing to do with where the money is coming from, or how much money is being decided over, but churches, schools, organizations, PTOs, municipalities, townships, and more can all engage in participatory budgeting. What matters most is the process, how folks are centered in decision-making, and how power is shifted to those most impacted. In our case, this means making sure that residents have control over how decisions are made during the PB process, how ideas are created, how they are voted on, and the collective vision of the process as a whole. Our vision in the fifth ward was simple. We wanted to break the table and rebuild it so that more folks could join us with the table holding space for them as well. This meant creating guidelines that made the process inclusive, building a stronger sense of belonging, and helping neighbors connect with one another. All the fifth ward residents over the age of 14, this means youth can participate as well, are allowed to vote on projects that their neighbors created, not me. This includes our undocumented neighbors, youth, folks who are unsatisfied or apathetic towards politics, and those who have historically been invisible in our community or left out of the democratic process. We want PB to help us broaden, strengthen, and revitalize our civic ecosystem. We want our neighbors to have a voice. I encourage any public officials, city employees, or institutions in Berwyn to reach out to me if they want to learn more about this process. I will also be hosting a civic series on participatory budgeting in the summer with Great Cities Institute. They are the organization that helps many different electives and institutions do participatory budgeting all throughout the county, and they're connected through UIC. This will be another opportunity for folks to learn more about PB and see how it could be implemented in the various aspects of public and community life. Thank you for giving me this time to share.
Okay, anybody else?
I'd just like to give a shout out to Chicago Hope Academy last week, and Stryker Lanes and Waldo Cooney's Pizza, as my colleague Rob just mentioned. Getting initiatives done in our community is not, cannot be done without community partnerships on all levels. Last week, Chicago Hope Academy had 72 senior students come out for a senior project day, and in the sixth ward, we did a clean sweep of the entire ward, and we guarded and weeded our end caps last week, Thursday. That was a full day projects, senior project day for them that they needed to complete in order to graduate. I want to thank Jerry and his staff over at Stryker Lanes. Without their space, we would not have been able to have, enjoy lunch, and then disperse quickly into the ward and complete our work. Also, Waldo Coonies, who opened up just a little bit early so we can feed 72 hungry senior students, made sure pizza was delivered on time and hot. So, I'm really excited about partnerships like that, that allow us to serve our community and lift it up in many ways. I also want to remind everyone that I am collaborating with the Cook County Assessor's Office, as well as with our own township, Berwyn Township Assessor Jackie Pareda. We're hosting a tax assessment and appeal workshop on Thursday, May 18th at St. Mary of South, starting at 6:00 AM, and that is open for the entire community.
Okay, anybody else? Did you want to talk about the letters people got from the assessor? Is that what you refer Jackie?
I actually was going to also remind folks about the water pipe inventory, and then I'll mention the letters. Just as a reminder, folks, that the water pipe inventory initiative launched on April 27th, and all were provided with that information that is currently on our website, including our main page. It is very, very important, and Alderman shared that right away. We have not had a good turnout in terms of the feedback. It is somewhat of a particular process. We do have that information and how to go about and do that on YouTube right now, so I'm just urging everyone in the next two weeks, because it is critical that we submit these within the appropriate time in order for it to be less costly on the city. So, please, I'm going to resend that information to you all with the flyers that are bilingual attached, but do everything you can to get this information out. If Bob, if you have any questions, Bob Schiller's here as well, as this was the Public Works Initiative, but I just want to remind folks that it's very important for you to submit those surveys and reach out to your residents so that we can get that started. Lastly, the information regarding the various assessor opportunities for both appeals and reassessment education is ongoing. Alderman, Reese mentioned the next one. You all also have that calendar. Please be sure to provide that with homeowners. There's been a lot of changes, including some unfortunately fraudulent activity that has occurred because of the letters that have been sent from the Cook County's Assessor regarding the reassessments. There has been some predatory law firms that are offering to do this for our city for money, and we just want to remind folks that that service is available at no cost through the Berwyn Township Assessor. So, I'll go ahead and re-forward that information again, but we do have it scheduled to go out as an advisory multiple times throughout the month.
Yeah, as everybody got their reassessment letters from the county, it just so happened that a company by the name of, I think it's like a PLOLC, their letter hit the mailboxes the same day, telling everybody what their taxes were going to be. It's not necessarily true. That's what Jackie Pareda, Township Assessor, is trying to educate people, to say, yes, all these assessments went up, that doesn't necessarily mean that your bill went from $5,000 to $10,000. And that's what this company is trying to tell everybody, and that's just so they can get your business. So, please be aware of that mail, and please attend these sessions with our Township Assessor so she can get the right information and teach you how to go about appealing. She will have appeal workshops, and she has one now. She'll have several throughout the appeal period for Berwyn Township.
In fact, she has one this Saturday, a drive-up at the VFW on Harlem and 15th and the 7th Ward.
Okay.
We're also going to have one in the, for first ward, but for all residents, at the Police Community Center on May 17th, Wednesday, from 6:00 to 7:00.
Okay, so take advantage of that. Anything else? Okay, item C1, please.
Item C1, the minutes of the regular meeting held on April 25th, 2023.
I'll make a motion to approve the regular city council meeting minutes of April 25th, 2023.
Second. Motion by Lennon, second by Boywood, to approve the Berwyn City Council minutes of April 25th, 2023. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it. Item D1, please.
Item D1 is a communication from Public Works Director Schiller regarding the award of the 2023 roadway resurfacing program.
I recommend that we, my motion is to concur with Director Schiller's recommendation to approve the 2023 asphalt resurfacing program to Lindell Brothers, Inc., in the amount of $2,527,038.95, plus a 7% contingency funded through MFT and RBI.
Second.
Motion by Ruiz, second by Aronella, to concur with Director Schiller and approve the 2023 asphalt resurfacing program to Lindell Brothers in the amount of $2,527,038.95, plus a 7% contingency. This will all be funded through MFT and RBI funds. All those in favor?
Aye.
Lennon?
Aye.
Boywood?
Aye.
Lisa?
Aye.
Faith?
Aye.
Pabon?
Aye.
Ruiz?
Aye.
Aronella?
Aye.
Carmichael?
Aye.
Eight ayes, mayor.
Motion carried. Item F1, please.
Item F1 is a communication from the mayor with a resolution that reads, "A resolution calling for a binding referendum to consider nonpartisan primary and general consolidated elections for elected city officials in the city of Berwyn, County of Cook, State of Illinois."
I will make a motion to adopt this resolution, calling for a binding referendum to be put on the March 19th, 2024 election ballot for a nonpartisan primary and general electorate.
Before we make a second, I'd just like to ask a question if that's okay?
Sure.
So, I've been doing some research on nonpartisan, just looking at the two different differences, and I was just wondering if, mayor, you would be willing to share a little bit as to why this had come up, or what were some of the reasonings behind doing this now at this time?
Basically, because this has been brought up many times in the past, and I just thought we should get it done before our next election. We did have it up on the floor once before. The problem was, was there were some typos in it that left off the treasurer, and it also included trustees of the township. Unfortunately, the legal research shows that we cannot dictate with respect to the township during a nonpartisan. That's done by the, I believe by the House, because they have to go by the legislature, not by us, and since they are a separate entity, they would have to talk to their legislators with respect to that. So, we did enough homework on it to know that we can only do it with the city offices, and we just think it's about time, because it's been called for for quite a few years.
Thank you.
Second.
Motion by Lennon to adopt the resolution, calling for binding referendum to consider nonpartisan primary and general election to be put on the general, the primary ballot of March 19th, 2024, fix necessary signatures, and place it on its way to passage. All those in favor, I'll call the roll.
Lennon?
Aye.
Boywood?
Aye.
Lisa?
Aye.
Faith?
Aye.
Pabon?
Aye.
Ruiz?
Aye.
Aronella?
Aye.
Carmichael?
Aye.
Eight ayes, mayor.
Motion carried. Item G1, please.
G1 is a communication from the clerk, requesting the authority to remove the handicap parking space at 1334 South Kyler.
It would be my motion that city council concur with the recommendation by Clerk Paul to remove the handicap parking signs at 1334 Kyler, due to there being reasonable access to the resident's garage.
Second.
Motion by Pabon, second by Aronella, to concur with the, to concur with the removal of the handicap spot at 1334 Kyler, due to the accessibility to other parking facilities. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Item G2, please.
G2 is another communication from the clerk's office, requesting authorization to remove the handicap parking signs at 2846 Highland.
It'd be my motion to concur with Clerk Paul, remove the signs due to the resident moving out of Berwyn.
Second. Motion by Faith, second by Lennon, to concur with the removal of handicap space at 2846 Highland, due to the residents moving out of Berwyn. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it. Item I1, please.
I1 is a communication from all the person, Pabon, requesting to refer an item to the committee of the whole.
It would be my motion that city council refer this item to the next available committee of the whole meeting. Also request that Berwyn Police Department be present and share any data from 2021 and 2022 regarding calls made in July and June for fireworks.
Second.
Not done yet, and we review the current fireworks ordinance, Chapter 692, and discuss potential strategies to better address this issue.
Second.
Okay, motion by Pabon, second by Carmichael first, I'll give you two seconds. To refer this communication to the committee of the whole, I promised Alderman and Pabon that I will get it on the next committee of the whole for our next meeting. I've already spoken to Chief Semaglia, who has already assembled the data that you're requiring, and I'm asking you all to bring your suggestions, because I know this has been discussed many years, and it's a tough situation, so bring your suggestions. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Item J1, please.
J1 is a communication from City Attorney Bertucca with an ordinance that reads, "An ordinance amending Chapter 234, Section 234.02, the codified ordinances regarding ambulance service for the city of Berwyn County of Cook, State of Illinois."
Let's look at each other. All I need is a motion to approve the amended ordinance.
I'll make that motion to approve the amended ordinance.
Second.
Motion to approve the amended ordinance, the fix necessary signatures placed on its way to passage by Lennon, seconded by Aronella. All those in favor, I'll call the roll.
Lennon?
Aye.
Boywood?
Aye.
Lisa?
Aye.
Faith?
Aye.
Pabon?
Aye.
Ruiz?
Aye.
Aronella?
Aye.
Carmichael?
Aye.
Eight ayes, mayor.
Motion carried. Item J2, please.
J2 is a communication from Chief Semaglia, a request to promote one patrol officer to the rank of sergeant.
I move that we concur with Police Chief Semaglia's request to promote one patrol officer to the civil service rank of sergeant, due to the retirement of Deputy Chief Guy Papa.
Second.
Motion by LaJa, seconded by Lennon, to concur with Chief Semaglia, and have him go to the commission for the promotion of one officer to the civil service rank of sergeant, due to the retirement of Deputy Police Chief Guy Papa. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Item J3, please.
J3 is a communication from Chief Semaglia, requesting graffiti removal machine.
I move that we concur with Police Chief Michael Semaglia's request to purchase a replacement pressure washer graffiti removal machine from high PSI for a total cost of
Second.
Motion by LaJa, seconded by Lennon, to concur with Chief Semaglia, and allow the purchase of a graffiti removal machine from high PSI at the cost of $11,974. All those in favor, I'll call the roll.
Lennon?
Aye.
Boywood?
Aye.
Lisa?
Aye.
Faith?
Aye.
Pabon?
Aye.
Ruiz?
Aye.
Aronella?
Aye.
Carmichael?
Aye.
Eight ayes, mayor.
Motion carried. Item J4.
J4 is a communication from Chief Semaglia, a request, requesting authority to purchase five 2023 Ford Explorers.
I move that we concur with Police Chief Semaglia's request to purchase five 2023 Ford Explorers, and approve the request to waive the sealed bid process and accept the proposal from Curry Motors Frankfurt, Inc., due to the fact that Curry Motors is an approved vendor on the state bid contract list and is honoring the price rollover and contract extension under SPC Contract Number 204, at a cost of $44,243.24 per vehicle for a total cost of $221,216.20.
Second.
Motion by LaJa, seconded by Lennon, to concur with Chief Semaglia, allow the purchase of five 2023 Ford Explorers at a total cost of $221,216.20, waiving the sealed bid process based on it being a state bid contract. All those in favor, I'll call the roll.
Lennon?
Aye.
Boywood?
Aye.
Lisa?
Aye.
Faith?
Aye.
Pabon?
Aye.
Ruiz?
Aye.
Aronella?
Aye.
Carmichael?
Aye.
Eight ayes, mayor.
Motion carried. Item J5, please.
J5 is a communication from Chief Semaglia. It is an informational, the police department revenue collection for April 2023.
I have a quick question on this, mayor. When, I think this like started popping up like four or five councils ago, what, is there like a, was there an agreement or something of why this is, or have I just missed it in the past?
There's no agreement. The chief just decided that he should be reporting to us on informational processes than just putting in consent agenda, where all the things usually go, that he'd like to have it individually to show that what's being collected.
Cool, thanks.
So, yeah, it was his unilateral decision to do that, let you guys know what's going on.
Sounds good, thank you.
I move that we accept this communication from Police Chief Michael Semaglia regarding the revenue collection for the month of April as informational.
Second.
Motion by LaJa, seconded by Lennon, to consider the communication from Chief Semaglia as informational. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Item J6, please.
Item J6 is a communication from Chief Semaglia, advising us of his permission for the Hispanic Parade on September 24th, 2023.
It is my motion that we accept this communication from Chief Semaglia as informational, approving the route for the Hispanic, Hispanic Month Parade, Hispanic Heritage Month Parade on Sunday, September 24th. It will be the same as last year, lining up in front of Lincoln Middle School, starting around 11:00 AM. The kickoff will be at noon, leading us down 16th Street to East Avenue, and East Avenue to the Basin Fairway, where we will immediately start the festival.
Second.
Who seconded?
Second.
Motion by Ruiz, seconded by Pabon, to concur with Chief Semaglia, and consider the communication as informational, announcing the approval of the Rock for the Berwyn Hispanic Parade and Festival from September 24th, 2023. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Item J7, please.
J7 is a communication from Public Works Director Schiller, a request to pay, pay estimate number four regarding the roadway resurfacing program 2022.
It is my motion to approve, to concur with Director Schiller's recommendation with Navatney Engineering, who recommends the approval of pay estimate number four to Lindell Brothers, Inc., in the amount of $625,406.25 for the 2022 roadway resurfacing program.
Second.
Motion by Ruiz, seconded by Faith, to concur with Director Schiller and Navatney Engineering, and approve the pay estimate number four to Lindell Brothers, Inc., in the amount of $625,406.25 for the 2022 roadway resurfacing program. All those in favor, I'll call the roll.
So, we have a question. Bob?
There's different numbers.
There's conflicting numbers from the agenda to the, your communication, which is the accurate amount. We have six fifty-four and six twenty-five.
Six twenty-five.
Okay. So that's the amount I?
Thank you.
That's the one you mentioned.
Yes.
Okay, so that's the motion. Call the roll, please.
Lennon?
Aye.
Waywood?
Aye.
Lisa?
Aye.
Fait?
Aye.
Babon?
Aye.
Ruiz?
Aye.
Aronella?
Aye.
Carmichael?
Aye.
Eight ayes, Mayor.
Motion carried. Item J eight, please.
J eight is a communication from Director Schiller, a request to approve pay estimate number four for the Depot Streetscape Project.
It is my motion to approve Director Schiller's recommendation. Staff concurs with construction engineering, postal yore, engineering, the approval pay estimate number four in the amount of two hundred nineteen thousand, one hundred and sixty dollars and ninety-five cents to RW Dutman Company for payment number four for Depot District Streetscape Project.
Second.
Motion by Ruiz, seconded by Aronella, to concur with Director Schiller, Postal Yore Engineering, an authorized payment number four to Dutman Company in the amount of two hundred nineteen thousand, one hundred and sixty dollars and ninety-five cents for the Depot District Streetscape Project. All those in favor, call the roll.
Lennon?
Aye.
Waywood?
Aye.
Lisa?
Aye.
Fait?
Aye.
Babon?
Aye.
Ruiz?
Aye.
Aronella?
Aye.
Carmichael?
Aye.
Eight ayes, Mayor.
Motion carried. Item J nine, please.
J nine is a communication from Director Schiller requesting approval of the purchase of Case two thousand twenty-two nine twenty-one loader, G wheel loader.
It is my recommendation to approve Director Schiller's recommendation to waive the sealed bid process and purchase a previously leased two thousand twenty-two Case nine two one G small wheel loader and the disposal of the two thousand, oh, in the amount of one hundred and fifty-nine thousand, seven hundred and seventy-five dollars, and the disposal of the two thousand and five Case seven two one D through auction. The purchase is budgeted within the five hundred forty-four utilities budget.
Second.
Motion by Ruiz, seconded by Fait, to concur with Director Schiller waiving the sealed bid process and purchasing a previously leased two thousand twenty-two loader for a total of cost of one hundred fifty-nine thousand, seven hundred and seventy-five dollars, and also allowing the disposal of two thousand and five Case loader through auction. All those in favor, call the roll.
Lennon?
Aye.
Waywood?
Aye.
Lisa?
Aye.
Fait?
Aye.
Babon?
Aye.
Ruiz?
Aye.
Aronella?
Aye.
And Carmichael?
Aye.
Eight ayes, Mayor.
Motion carried. Item J ten, please.
J ten is a communication from City Administrator Ruth Siaba-Green regarding a request, requesting approval for additional sections to the employee handbook.
This is all pursuant to the new legislation that passed the, was it the feds or the states?
It was through the state, so our employee handbook already covers all other employees except for the category of seasonal part-time personnel. And so we already meet the standards for all of our other employees. This was the only category that didn't have anything within our handbook. So just to comply with state law, I was just suggesting putting in the additional. And if it is approved, then I'll go ahead and update our city's employee handbook on our website and also send an email out to our department heads to make them aware of the change.
Okay.
I move that we concur with City Administrator Siaba-Green and amend the employee handbook.
Second.
Motion by Laia, seconded by Lennon, to concur with City Administrator Siaba-Green and amend the city, the employee handbook based on change in the state law. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item J eleven, please.
J eleven is a communication from Library Director Sheedy requesting the authorization to go out for bid on a library renovation project.
I'll make a motion to allow the library to go out to bid for the renovation of the Reading Advisory Office and construct two meeting rooms.
Second.
Motion by Lennon, seconded by Babon, to concur with Director Shealy, Sheedy, and allow and authorize to secure bid forms from the contractors to renovate the Reader Advisory Office and two meeting rooms. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. The consent agenda?
On the question, Mayor?
Yes.
I'd like to pull K ten. It is a handicap for twenty-three forty-five Wesley is actually in the fourth ward, and they had it to the third ward, and I have never had a look at this. So I'd like to pull that and review it for two weeks.
Do I have a second to all?
I'll second.
Second.
Seconded by Ruiz. Motion by Fait, seconded by Ruiz.
I also have a question.
To pull item K ten from the consent agenda and vote on it independently. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I also?
The ayes have it. Item K ten, please. Would you repeat your motion to?
It would be my motion to defer for two weeks. I've never even reviewed this, so.
Second.
Motion by Fait, seconded by Ruiz, to defer for two weeks. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. The rest of the consent agenda?
K eight, I have a question about K eight. And the Black Party twenty-two hundred of Winona, it says seven one and seven two, and then the rain dates. I've never seen a Black Party with two dates.
Oh.
Has it been approved for the one date?
No, no, no. Oh, the twenty-two hundred Black of Winona?
Yeah.
Yeah, it says one and two. It's on the first and the second.
For two days, don't they?
Um, the thirty-two hundred Black of Winona usually has?
Twenty-two hundred.
Twenty-two, yeah.
Well, you make a motion to pull it and then look at it.
Looks like it's Fourth of July weekend.
Okay, what I would suggest is that for you to defer for two weeks so that you can have an opportunity to talk to people to find out why you want two separate days. I understand a rain date, but you're correct, a Black Party for two separate days.
Right.
Never seen it before.
I thought they've always done that, but maybe not.
That, then I'm aware. So is that what your motion is?
Yes, a motion to defer the K eight twenty-two hundred Black of Winona, Black Party for, I, I'll check up the dates.
Second.
Motion by Aronella, seconded by Fait, to pull item K eight from the consent agenda and defer it for two weeks. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. The remainder of the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the remainder of the consent agenda as modified.
Second.
Motion by Lennon, seconded by Ruiz, to approve the consent agenda as modified. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Alderman Committee meetings, Alderman Lennon?
Call the chair.
Alderman Waywood?
Call the chair.
Alderman Laia?
I'm having my third ward meeting tomorrow night at the Police Department Community Room. I have some special guest speakers. Chris Cristiani from Illinois State Senator Michael Porfirio's office, Sylvia Villa from State Representative Elizabeth Hernandez's office, and Yusuf Vidal from State Representative Ambassador Rashid's office.
Okay, call the chair. Call the chair.
Just once again, a quick reminder, May sixteenth, that's a Tuesday, six PM, we're having our community ward meeting at Head Park Studio, and call the chair.
Ruiz?
Call the chair.
Alderman Aronella?
Call the chair.
Alderman Carmichael?
Two things. We got this weekend, Saturday at ten AM, we'll be doing a ward cleanup